Thus vow, as we pray. Almighty God, whom all blessings flow. We thank you for the great citizens gathering today, God, in this great city of Rocky Mountain, to discuss the business of our city and its region, where we bring integrity and care to dignity dignity to our meeting, that when we leave here tonight, God, that the business of our city will be one, God, that we enhance the lives of the totality of our people. We bless you now, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Good night.
All right, I'll ask for a roll call from City Clerk.
Councilman Knight.
Here.
Blackwell. Joiner.
Here.
Walker.
Good.
Dontrid.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
And Mallon.
Here.
Okay. All right, item number four is the approval of the minutes of regular scheduled meeting of City Council held February tenth of two thousand and twenty. Is there any discussion? Do we have a motion?
No.
It's moved by Councilman Dontrid, seconded by Councilman Joiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Get past us. Item number five is consideration of minutes and recommendations from the regular scheduled committee of the whole meeting held on February tenth of two thousand and twenty. Number one, the Armory Rock Building Reuse Project of Dachshund Hampton, by consensus, council authorized the resolution to be placed on the February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty City Council Agenda. Item number two of that meeting was the second quarter of fiscal year two thousand and twenty Report of Revenues and Expenses. Ken Hunter, report, no action. Item three is Alexander Evans Field Operation Complex Dedication of Brad Kerr. By consensus, the council approved a meeting moving forward with signs, plaque, and dedication during the timeframe suggested and to have information relative to the appearance of the Kiotas signs at a later date. And item four, closed session, which was an attorney-client privilege in economic development matter. Any discussion on that? Do we have a motion?
No.
So moved by Councilman Knight. I'm sorry. Second.
Second.
Hi. Mr. Joiner. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like aye. Passes. Brings us to item number six, which is the community update by our city manager, Michelle Big, small Tony.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, my comments today will be somewhat brief, but I think certainly necessary and important for you to hear. First, due to implement well the first of the three public meetings concerning the proposed renovations at Battle Park was canceled, there is still time for citizens to give their input at two of the upcoming scheduled meetings, which are being extended by thirty minutes. One meeting will be held on February the twenty-seventh, from six o'clock P.M. until eight o'clock P.M., and another on March second, from ten P.M. until noon. All meetings will be held in the theater lobby of the Imperial Center for the Arts and Sciences located at two seven zero Gate Street in downtown. Just want to make sure that everyone is clear that these meetings are not in any way related to the community conversations regarding the Confederate Monument held in two thousand and eighteen by the city's Human Relations Department, as Battle Park sits on an independent parcel of land separate from the monument. The Battle Park Master Plan is public input meetings that allow citizens to engage in two-way conversations and plan with the city's Parks and Recreation staff. Once the plan is developed, the city of Rocky Mountain intends to utilize the resulting planning efforts to apply for numerous grants, including federal grants. For more information, please call two five two nine seven two one one five one. The city's Parks and Recreation League Basketball Playoffs have tipped off this evening at the Rocky Mountain Event Center. Age groups include eight and under, ten and under, twelve and under, and fifteen and under. Championship games will be played at six o'clock P.M. and seven o'clock P.M., Thursday, February the twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh, in each age group. We encourage you to come out and support our area youth and coaches who have put a tremendous amount of time and effort into these events. Talk and Draw will also be held this Thursday, February the twenty-seventh, at twelve o'clock in the Arts Education Building at the Imperial Center for the Arts and Sciences. Participants attending the event will be able to connect with local artists. Admission is free, so bring your lunch and your creativity. The city's Parks and Recreation Department will host its two thousand and twenty Job Fair on March second, from ten A.M. until one o'clock P.M. in the Booker T. Washington Community Center Gymnasium. Representatives from more than twenty local companies will be on hand to talk with prospective employees. And all local production of Young Frankenstein will be held during a pair of weekends in March at the Imperial Center. Performances will run March the sixth through the seventh, and thirteenth through the fourteenth, at seven thirty P.M. Matinees will be held at two o'clock P.M. on March eighth and fifteenth. Tickets are eleven dollars for general admission, nine dollars for seniors and students, and seven dollars for children twelve and under. Young Frankenstein is a comedy based on the Mel Brooks musical. As I said before, previous council meetings, we encourage you to ensure your household, your neighbor's household, and your community are counted in the two thousand and twenty Census. The Census will determine funding for housing programs, schools, hospitals, economic development, and much more in our community. Your confidential data can be submitted online at two thousand and twenty census dot gov. I believe that the city of Rocky Mountain employees are unmatched in their daily commitment to their jobs and the service of our citizens. Therefore, I'm launching a city manager's awards program, which will bring to the forefront some of the outstanding work done by city employees. Nominations may be submitted by an employee or citizen online via rockymountnc.gov, via email to jesse.nunnery@rockymountnc.gov, and drop boxes at various city facilities. Nominations should include a detailed and accurate account about what makes their nominee outstanding, and how that employee exhibits the city's core values. Nomination forms are available in city facilities and in the council chambers during city council meetings. And then finally, it is my pleasure to introduce to you and members of the public our newest member of our executive leadership team, and that is none other than Cynthia T. Jones, who began her tenure today with us as our newly hired Community and Business Development Director. Mrs. Jones brings nearly twenty years of municipal government experience to Rocky Mountain, and she spent the past four years as the Edgecombe County Planning and Inspections Director. So I'd like to introduce to you our newest director, Mrs. Jones, Cynthia T. Jones.
Thank you, Miss Smalltony.
Right.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Guess the night.
I want to make one, one comment to the city manager update in reference to the Battle Park Master Plan. I don't care how we look at it, how we read it, we cannot separate the Confederate Monument from the Battle Park. It is part of the original property. There's no barrier separating. It's time to revisit it. We have discussed this numerous of times in this city, and we have aborted talking about it and bringing about a resolution. So I just want the city manager to know, the council to know, and our citizens to know that we cannot separate the Confederate Monument, no matter how ugly the past is or how painful. It is part of the Battle Park, and if we read further back in our history, it was a part of the meal. So let's not get history twisted. Let's be honest and real and deal with the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. At this time, item number six, I'd like to ask Mr. Jim Martin to come to the podium and introduce our newest member of our community at Nash Community College.
Mayor, members of City Council, city manager, city clerk, city attorney, I'm Jim Martin, one sixteen Cobblestone Court, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, and a member of the Board of Trustees of Nash Community College. It's our pleasure this afternoon to introduce to you our new president, the fifth president of Nash Community College, Dr. Lou Honeycutt. But first, before I do that, let me invite you to visit Nash Community College campus. If you haven't been up there in a while, there's a lot of new and exciting things that are going on, and I think you'll be very well surprised and, and see some good things. And not only on Old Perry Road, but right up the street here on Hammond Street, in the former Rocky Mountain High School facility, where we have the now City High School, which is the Center for Industry, Technology, and Innovation, which is serving our, our community here in the, within the city limits of Rocky Mountain. So please come out and visit us as, as often as you can. As I said, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Honeycutt, and I won't go into his, all of his academic achievements, but just to give you a background of where his experience come from, comes from, he has been on the faculty and/or administrative positions in Agnes State University, Southwest Texas State University, Frank Phillips College in Texas, and most recently comes to us from the Griffin Campus of the University of Georgia, which serves some thirty-two thousand students each year. We're happy to have Mr. Dr. Honeycutt with us. He's very excited about being here, and he's like a lot of the rest of us here. He's not from Nash, Rocky Mountain, but he got here as soon as he could. And mayor, you probably ought to go ahead and start your timer, because when this man starts talking about how happy he is to be in eastern North Carolina, he doesn't know the word stop. It's not his vocabulary.
I'm not sure we want to hear the end of that.
I'm not sure that I can follow that, but I'll, I'll definitely try. Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you all for, for having me today. I bring you well, warm wishes and greetings from Nash Community College. And let me tell you, I did get here as fast as I could. I am a Texas boy, and it's been a long time since I've been a boy, but you know what I mean. But my educational journey took me a lot of places, and my father used to refer to me after I finished my Ph.D. as having more degrees than a thermometer. And in some aspects, he was right, but I said, Dad, it will pay off. And he's up in heaven now looking down on me, but he, he will see that it has paid off. Because one of the greatest things that ever happened to me is a friend of mine from Chicago texted me, or sent me an email one day and said, click this link, this is what you've been working for. Well, you never want to click a link from a friend that sends you something that works. So I said back and said, what is this? And she said, just click it. So I clicked it, and it was a, the job description and application process for president, fifth president of Nash Community College. So I sent back there and said, if this is so good, why don't you apply for it? And she said, because it's in the country, and I like Chicago. And so I clicked on it and looked, and literally within two minutes, I was hooked. And let me assure you, I was satisfied being at the University of Georgia. I was very happy there. I thought I would retire from there, but what I had gotten away from was mission. And my mission in life has always been to change lives, and change lives for the positive. And the community college in Texas, I was there for twelve years, that's what we did. University of Georgia offered me great opportunities to learn leadership skills, but we were, really weren't changing lives to the extent that community college system does. So when I saw this opportunity, I went to work doing research, and it was like doing a Ph.D. dissertation, because I researched Nash County, Rocky Mountain, Nashville, the original Nashville, I had to learn to start saying it that way, and many other aspects of the college, because I thought if I'm going to pick up again and move, I was in Georgia for four years, this had to be the place to be. Well, I want to tell you, from the time I interviewed, the board made me feel at home immediately. At, at one point, they said, we think you may know more about us than we do, because I had studied Nash Community College very diligently, and this whole area. I am very regionally oriented. I believe what's, you know, Nash County funds part of the college budget, but I've got to look beyond Nash County, because what's good for the region is good for all of us. And I firmly believe there is an incredible future ahead, or I wouldn't be here. I, I see the great history that's here, I see the great present, but I see an incredible future for Nash County, Rocky Mountain, Nashville, every one of the surrounding area. One of the things that we have always been focused on and will continue to be is the workforce. And that's where sometimes at the university level, I got a little jaded and off, off mission a little bit, because we were more ivory tower, get your four-year degree to want to do something. I firmly believe that we have the potential workforce in Nash County to make us even greater than we are, but we've got to train them. And we've got to convince everyone that not everyone needs a four-year degree. Let's get them the skills they need to be successful, and get them in the workplace, and more importantly, let's keep them in Nash County. So we are committed to that. We, our programs, our workforce programs are second to none. One of the highest ranking system officials in the state told me at my first meeting, pulled me aside and said, let me assure you, Nash Community College is the rock of eastern North Carolina. If it ever changes, let me know, and we'll, we'll get back on track. We are very well respected, as is this whole county and community. I am very much entrenched, in fact, I started November first, and I think I attended about seven hundred thousand events between November first and December twenty-fifth. It was the perfect time to move to this area, because there's something going on every night at that time, sometimes two and three things. But it really got me engrossed and involved in the community. I'm very committed to that. So anything that we can do for, for the city, you've got to come talk to me. I'm, we're committed. I can't succeed if y'all don't succeed. And I like to think y'all can't succeed if we don't succeed. We're all in this together. So with that, I would say, is there any questions that you might have? Please know that I am thrilled to be here. I tell everybody that, and they ask me where I'm from, I say, well, the college is in Rocky Mountain slash Nashville slash Nash County. I talk about everybody at once, so I'll do that continuously, but we work very closely with Edgecombe Community College, we'll continue to, because again, there's enough to go around. So again, we're very, Dr. Honeycutt, I hope you're very regional. So can I answer any questions for y'all? I know I'm on a timeline here, and Jim's right, I talk forever. So come by, you need to come to my office, please come to campus. We'll sit and visit, and we'll talk about the future of, of Rocky Mountain, Nash Community College. What questions can I answer for y'all?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you all very much. I'm very happy.
Okay, this brings us, brings us to the public comment portion of our city council meeting. This is petitions for the public portion, and this is an opportunity for our public to comment, and we thank you for coming, City Council, to share your views, and we value all citizen input. Please be aware that signed sheets must be presented to the officer prior to the opening of petitions for the public, and any comment should be directed to the council as a whole, and not to individual council members or city staff. This is your opportunity to raise a question, present a request to council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer in matters of the city manager or staff for follow-up. We ask you to speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, respectful manner, and give your name and address. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated, and you will be asked to sit down or remove from the meeting. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and you will have three minutes. If an organized group is present, present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments. If your comments are in regard to an item that is a subject of a public hearing, please wait until that item is introduced to speak. Time will also be monitored. If your comments are in regard to an evidentiary hearing, additional time may be granted. At this point in time, I would like to call Judge Leon Henderson to the podium. Please state your address for the record, if you don't mind.
My name is Leon Henderson, of course, I live at seventeen Mockingbird Lane, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I'm a retired lawyer and former Superior Court Judge, and that man is a hard act of law. I have come here today to ask you again to install red light cameras at the intersections that have a high frequency of crashes. On August the seventh, two thousand and seventeen, I wrote to then-councilman Mont Wiggins, expressing my concern about the number of people I have seen running red lights and counting it on the delay to make it through the intersection. Mr. Wiggins, arrange, Judge Wiggins, now arranged a meeting with the city manager and assistant city manager, interim police chief, I Williams, himself and I, on August the twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen. Interest was expressed, but nothing moved forward. On April the ninth, the city council meeting as a committee of the whole received a report from interim council, interim assistant city manager Pete Barney regarding the city's experience with red light cameras dating back to two thousand and two. At the conclusion of this report, the committee voted unanimously to authorize the staff to move forward, with drafting the inter-local agreements with the school system and authorize the city attorney to proceed with obtaining the required legislative authority. Two years have gone by, and to the best of my knowledge, nothing has been done. I'm interested in this for the following reasons. Some of my friends have sustained damage and injury at crashes at some of these intersections. We have the technology, and we used it before with positive results, to reduce the number and severity of crashes at intersections. We are now able to attain the authority we need from the General Assembly to employ this technology and break even, or better, monetarily. Other cities in North Carolina, including Greenville, Raleigh, Charlotte, and Fayetteville, are using this technology. I obtained some crash data from the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the time thousand, for the time period two thousand and four to two thousand and eighteen. That you mind are interesting. During that four-year, two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen, there were fifty-three crashes at Raleigh Street and Fairview Road. There were eighty-two crashes beneath the New Road in Jeffries, thirty crashes at Thomas and Arlington, and eighty-three crashes at Sunset and Winston. In the interest of public safety, I respectfully ask again that you act. Whoops.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to ask Glenn Wilkins to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Mine is short and sweet. I saw on the agenda too, I stood here last month about my concern about someone serving on the HRC that was not a citizen of Rocky Mountain, and I understand that situation is resolved. I want to thank all the individuals involved who talked behind the scenes, and understand it was nothing personal, but if you're not a city of this, a resident of this city, you shouldn't serve on the committees. So thank you for that. My second statement is, last October, I stood here in front of you all, most of you all, and expressed concern about the South Rocky Mountain Community Center roof. I was told at that time, and public was too, and it was in the telegram, that there were bids out. Well, at the January meeting last month, when I inquired, I was told that the bids were out, and I said, well, that's what you said last October. I do want to thank Councilman TJ Walker. I spoke with him after the January meeting, and after I had spoken to that person who said the bids were out, and it seemed, I don't know if the bids were out or not, but a bid just went out in February. So I thank you, Councilman Walker, for listening to my concern and getting with the city manager and whoever else to get that done. And I noticed on the bid that it ended February the twentieth, so I would expect we'd have a new roof at South Rocky Mountain Community Center soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that, please, Mayor.
Yes, absolutely. Councilman.
Ms. Wilkins, thank you for bringing that to my attention, and immediately speaking to Madam Manager. She kept her word, and that's what we have to do as a city, hold each other accountable. She kept her word to me, I kept my word to you. I think that's what forward progress is all about, and build a trust in this committee. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Then I'll ask General Gordon, Arnold Gordon-Bryant to the podium, if he would state your address for the record.
Ladies and Mayor, Council, City Manager, I'm going to bring good news, so you all can relax. Sirs, I rise to announce that there is a Christian park being constructed on the east end of Virginia Street. It's called the Alpha and Omega Passions Park. It is sponsored by my church, Immaculate Conception Catholic Church, on church property. And I say that to you because, one, is we're obviously a nonprofit, and so when you go to taxes, we want to lose that tax base for you, City Manager, take that off, off your books. If you are familiar with the Passion of Jesus Christ, this is a living replica to remind us of that it is a twelve-foot crucifix with fourteen nine-foot crosses, each having a symbol that explains what happens at that station. When the park is fully completed, you will have not just a, stations of the cross, but you'll also have a rosary for those who practice. And by the way, it's not just Catholics that do this, so. And it's called Alpha and Omega Passions Park for, for those citizens that want to come out there and reflect on their faith in their way, and there'll be binges out there. Actual completion for the, the entire park should occur around October. But this Friday, we will actually have a service at, at Stations at twelve o'clock, and then there will be a completion service on Good Friday, where we'll announce members of the entire diocese to come down for that. We say this because it ought to be one of those things that we remind folks that we are about here in this city. It's progress of facilities, progress of people, progress of industry, and progress of spirit. And in our way, we want to go ahead and share that with the city and the region. Sub to your questions. Thank you.
What location is that, please?
It is the extreme east end of Virginia Street. If you try to Google it, you need something, you sixteen-ten or sixteen-sixty-one, and for you, it's right across the street from Gideon Davis's house. All right? All right. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'd like to call Gloria Davis to the podium. If you could give us your address for the record.
Greetings to all of you. My name is Gloria Davis, nine in the eighteen-twelve in Arranion. And I would like to see the enforcement or reinforcement of the eighteen dwellers that are coming back into our communities, their parking on lots that are not an acre, and they're on the streets in front of houses, and cars that are parked in yards, and they're not hidden behind a house either, they're parked in the front yard, with grass growing up, even with the grass supposedly dying, the grass is still there, with cars in the yards, and to somehow, I, I don't know what happens exactly when someone comes, when animal, animal control comes and get a dog. I, I'm not quite sure what happens, but there are dogs that'll loose that are running people, and I saw this morning, when I was out, there, there's a dog that was trying to jump and get some kids that were going to school. So I'm glad he didn't get over the fence, and I might have got a stop, and he would have gotten into it, I guess, but, you know, it's, it's just, you know, I'm just concerned about those things, and if we're having workers, city workers, who was supposed to be patrolling or going out inspecting, I'm not, I, I can't understand. to be patrolling or going out inspecting, I'm not, I, I can't understand why they don't see these cars and these eighteen dwellers, or I, I just don't understand why they're not seeing, and maybe they've done something about. I don't know, but those are my concerns, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I'd like to call to the podium, Johnny Cunningham, please.
Johnny Cunningham, five forty-six Merigo Street, Citizens, uh, Council, Staff. I'm gonna beg your plea today, stop the plea. Nash County and different churches and organizations, all the prophets, uh, stringling Edgecombe County. I have been forced to defend myself in court of law under two fictitious bogus restraint orders because I'm singling out the exploitation of entities coming from Nash County absorbing all the resources out of Nash County. We are nonprofit in our community, and we've been working in our community for thirty years. For example, a building was donated during election time. The cost of that building now has tripped in repairs. Somebody benefited in donating that building. The entity that was in our community and the things that they're teaching our children, just like these Catholic churches moved into our black communities. We have Baptist churches, holy and sanctified churches. I don't think I know any black, uh, uh, Catholics on Virginia Street. We're not being treated fairly. The resources are being absorbed out of Edgecombe County, and they're being taken back to Nash County. I'm begging you that, that, that this stops. It's unfair for the children, as a matter of fact. The monies that's gonna be raised to finish the completion of this, uh, this center where peacemakers moved out of, the children were exploited, I call it exploitation, because the monies that's gonna take to, to, to bring that building up to par and to convert it to whatever it is gonna be converted into, when they moved out of the community where the most need was and moved closer and away from the children that most need, who's gonna benefit? The building is gonna absorb the, the resources, the children are being exploited to raise funds for the building, and it's the same thing. We were, our children are being exploited. There was, there was a group that comes all the way from Zeller. They used us, they exploited us, they lied to us, and they carried all the resources and the donations back to Zeller, and we're fighting to get those donations back to Rocky Mount. It is time that this council took a stance and said, "You know what? It is Edgecombe County that suffered, and the children and the people and the citizens in Edgecombe County." Thank you.
Thank you. You've still got, you've still got, you've still got off of your side.
You can give another example of exploitation of the Baptist Center on Thanksgiving morning for a young man. We've worked in that Baptist Center for five years. One of those restraint orders restricted us, and within that time, Thanksgiving morning, a young man tapping through a window accidentally fell to his death. Five point nine million dollars was allocated for that Baptist Center from Nash County investors. Nash General Hospital invested three hundred thousand dollars for a chaplain and a nurse that I've never seen go knocking on doors and talk in the street. On, they burned that young man on a Saturday. The following Monday morning, the wife got a call and said that her and her children had to vacate the premises. This bleeding needs to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. I'd like to ask Adrian Copeland to come to the podium. Would, uh, give us your address for the record.
Hey, Adrian Copeland, sixty-twenty Haywood Drive, Rocky Mount. I spoke to this council two meetings ago about tax foreclosures, and since then I've done some research and found that the city has done foreclosures in the past. Most recent one I could find was from nineteen eighty-five, although that's a long time ago. This is good news that at one point there was a process in place that could be resumed. Also, Richard J. Rose was the commissioner listed in those proceedings and attorney for the plaintiff, so we've got someone who may remember how things were done. So, where do we start? This process is no doubt a daunting one to undertake, so I propose we narrow down the scope to a manageable one to start while forming the process in a way that is scalable to include the entire city once the process works smoothly. As a city, Rocky Mount has already designated the historic districts as worthy of preservation to safeguard the heritage of our city, so it makes sense to start there. There are seven historic districts in Rocky Mount, four of them are local historic districts, and of those four, Villa Place spans three city wards. It's also my favorite, so I started there. Out of a hundred and twenty-nine parcels in Villa Place, there are twenty-nine that are delinquent in city taxes, that's twenty-two percent. Eighteen parcels are delinquent on city taxes, two years or more. Eleven are delinquent, six years or more. Four of them are delinquent, ten years or more. There are fifteen properties that are under a minimum housing code, that's twelve percent, so together, there are thirty-eight properties delinquent or under code. That is almost thirty percent of the homes in one neighborhood. I spoke to one property owner who told me that they don't prioritize paying their property taxes because they know that the city doesn't do anything about it, and they prefer to pay other things first. It gets worse. There are repeat offenders. Ten of these property owners own a total of thirty-nine other properties in Rocky Mount, which are also delinquent in taxes. Three of them are in the downtown central city historic district. Thirteen of them have been delinquent for ten years or more, and I don't know exactly how long because online records stopped there. These properties owned by these ten repeat offenders have opened bills with the city of Rocky Mount totaling over eighty-four thousand dollars. I have copies of this data here for almost all of you. These property owners that are repeat offenders is where we start. You can initiate tax foreclosures, or if that is too much trouble, North Carolina now allows for receivership for vacant properties. You can petition the Superior Court to appoint a receiver to take control of property. The receiver can sell the property or rehabilitate the property, and then sell it free from title incumbances to a new owner. No matter how you do it, the city needs to begin taking these properties back and not allowing the owners to disrespect our city and our citizens any longer. I will continue to research this issue and come up with plans and solutions, and I'm more than willing to meet with any of you or anybody else that wants to discuss it further. I've found a lot of ideas and solutions that could work here. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. Excuse me. This time I'd like to call Mr. Warren Dautridge to the podium.
It's kind of hard following a general and a judge, uh, and a doctor, uh, but I'll give a good shot. Mr. Mayor, this is city manager, council members, and fellow citizens. Excuse me, uh, thank you for your opportunity, my, your, my opportunity to address you today. I'm Warren Dautridge, and I live at one seventeen Manchester Court. Many assumed I might be done with my council engagements after, uh, with no basis and no fact and no merit being excoriated, following my previous address, but it couldn't be further from the truth. I'm now more energized than I have ever been. Mr. Mayor, as promised, I will keep, I'll continue to keep my topics positive and constructive. Those who would take the time to review my messages in the past meetings or on Facebook group Love Rocky Mount would find a consistent theme with very little deviation. I'm here due to a deeply rooted desire to make a meaningful, positive impact on my community. My prayer that the work we do will be seen as good for all, and that it sets an example for others throughout Rocky Mount and the surrounding area. For the record, so no one might have to guess what our group is all about, I offer this. President Harry Truman is quoted as saying, "I doubt if there is any problem in the world today, social, political, or economic, that would not find a happy solution if approached in the spirit of the Sermon on the Mount." Dr. Martin Luther King famously stated, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that." In my opinion, we have to stop dividing ourselves by the very, by every way imaginable. Black, white, Hispanic, Edgecombe, Nash, Republican, Democrat, Methodist, Catholic, male, female, gay, straight, or bi, pro-Trump, or never Trump. The possibilities for division go on into infinity. Why don't we try to just find out what makes us alike for a little while? Find a common denominator, something, anything, to start a meaningful conversation. Let's find something to love in each other and be like unto our paths. I'll close with a challenge to myself and anyone else that uses this lecture. Please be prepared during your address to not just complain, but also, more importantly, bring recommended solutions, ones you are willing to personally act on and join others to help achieve. We far too often lob suggestions or complaints over this podium waiting for someone else to act. Let's get to work together instead. In the last few months, the members of my group Love Rocky Mount and I have actively engaged people throughout the community. One group we've not had much success with is this council. If we are to make this city everything it can be, we must do it together, so my recommended action is very simple. Let's work together. Thank you.
I'd call it Ms. Menjies.
Maury Menjies, live at twenty-two twenty North Wesleyan Boulevard. Um, and I would like to reiterate what Mr. Dautridge said, love is the common denominator. Um, I was reading a little bit in the paper today about, or it might have been Saturdays, um, about the demolition of houses, um, that are obviously, sound like they're falling apart, so this is not a lot demolition you go for, but is, there all were houses or individual buildings. Does that group have anything to do with businesses that look like they're kind of dilapidated? I would like to also to remind about, um, a place called Ebony and Ivory, I believe, on south, is it, no, north, thank you, North Church Street. Um, it's still, it's pretty much an eyesore, and I had to go by it every day, and I'm just thinking new people coming in off ninety-five, and they have to get on Church Street, they're gonna think, and, um... And did anybody come up with an, or thought that was a good idea to have a, a neighborhood anti-litter group like they have when they, um, you know, anti-crime group? Nobody's ever said anything to me about that. And, um, and the update on the street improvement, the money that's gonna have to go for that? Anybody thought about that? And of course, please do not litter, and if you see somebody doing it, take their license plate, and the police will send them a little letter, as I know that works. Well, I don't know if it stops them from littering, but any, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call, uh, Ms. Kaya Darden.
Good afternoon. My name is Kaya Darden. I reside at sixteen hundred Barnes Street, Rocky Mount, North Carolina, Ward One. Greetings to the city manager, mayor, city council, and citizens of Rocky Mount. Since the last city council meeting, I haven't received a feedback concerning my comments made about a particular group on Facebook called the Concerned Citizens of Rocky Mount. Mostly positive, but to whom it may concern, my name is not Tia Darden, it is Kaya Darden. If you're going to quote anything that I say, please make sure that your voice translators are hearing me correctly. I would hate for my words and my name to be misconstrued this time. No matter how you try to downplay my comments concerning this city, I will continue to do my due diligence and speak out for those who don't have enough confidence to come to this podium, whether you like it or not. A comment was made that I am, after all, merely a child, as if what I have to say doesn't matter. I am eighteen years old, not a child, but a young adult, which my age has nothing to do with being able to understand right from wrong. Secondly, I want to point out that there are seven council members in our city. Only two of those names are constantly mentioned as if they were in the board, which we all know who they are, Councilman Blackwell and Councilman Knight. It's a sad case that some of us are so small-minded that we don't want to admit to the bullying taking place. Instead, we bystand, and some of us even partake in it. I never knew that adults would stoop to the levels that they do until I've read some of the articles and comments from Concerned Citizens. Since we want to be so on top of what's legal and illegal, cyberbullying is definitely illegal. I would like to commend Councilman Knight and Blackwell for their integrity and leadership character, continuing to thrive in the midst of all the stones that are being thrown at them. I also want to gladly announce that April tenth, twenty twenty, myself along with some other youth will be hosting our very first annual Easter egg hunt at Land Castle Park in the Hillsdale Community. All activities will be open to the public. If anyone would like to be a sponsor or contribute to our event, please feel free to contact me at two-five-two-eight-eight-six-zero-eight-zero-three, or Archie Jones in the Human Relations Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Landrea Williams, or Landrea Williams, land dean? I get that right? If you could give us your address for the record.
Greetings, Mayor, Councilman, and City Manager. My name is Landrea Williams, eighteen, twenty-four, Tom Street, Rocky Mount. Today, I would like to shine a light on a problem that has been overlooked, a problem that I have experienced for myself and a problem that Rocky Mount Housing Authorities ignore. If you are not aware, Rocky Mount Armstrong Apartments has a huge bedbug problem. My mother and I moved into Armstrong Apartments in October twenty eighteen. As we were moving in, we were notified by neighbors that the family before us had a bedbug problem. As we proceeded to move in, at first, bedbugs were not a problem for us until about March of twenty nineteen. As soon as the problem occurred, we notified the office and were put on a waiting list to receive treatment for several months as the problem just kept getting worse. Nobody ever came to treat it, and we notified the office again, and they said there was nothing they can do until we came upon a lease. They were very rude and did not care because they didn't have to live with the problem. Housing Authorities can be very strict, telling residents not to smoke within twenty feet of their apartments and no company for more than a week, but they allow infestation of bedbugs. We noticed all the other apartments all around us were receiving treatment for the same thing. It got so bad, my mother and I had to evacuate the apartment, leave all our furniture and other belongings behind. We were lucky enough to stay with the family friend, but most people aren't that lucky are still suffering to this day. This is a serious health concern, those apartments are infested. A neighbor informed us that she's been there for several years, and bedbug treatments were a normal thing for her. They always go and come back, she said. She also mentioned that it got so bad in her apartment that traveled to the bathroom and were coming out of the light switch on the walls. I have photos of bedbugs and of bedbug bikes. I suggest those apartments be torn down and rebuilt.
Thank you very much. Camellia Stanci, please come to the podium.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have a question for Ms. Williams.
Okay.
Are you referring to the original Armstrong Apartments?
Yes.
Okay.
Many of you have called already, and, um, I'm not going to follow that. Um, I only signed up to speak on the citizens' comments until by the means, but, um, throughout the meeting, I'm gonna add HRC and Confederate Monument. Um, HRC, I stand here proudly as a member of Rocky Mount NAACP, where I have been a member since nineteen ninety-two, um, and I have served Rocky Mount and Edgecombe County and outside of Edgecombe County and Nash County well. So, for someone to say that they're being unserved, not this guy, and I do it out of pocket. Also, um, I would challenge anyone, my work that has been done on the HRC, I'm a policy receiver, man, and, um, my appointment to the board was, um, they said it had been resolved, they think it was resolved because they came to the meeting, it's been resolved. It just haven't taken place yet, and it will take place soon. However, um, the Confederate Monument, when I spoke on the last, uh, last meeting, um, the newspaper and, um, social media ran with it. That needs to stop. The same... The same people talking about they love Rocky Mountain, or the same people that are doing it, are allowing it to be done on their sites. People ain't crazy. They got me blocked, so people send me stuff. Uh, citizens' comments. I am glad, um, Mr. O'Shea Tony spoke to the Confederate Monument thing, and I'm so glad that Andre Knight followed up, because that was one of my issues. Like I say, they took it and ran with it for my comments. And I appreciate what Andre said, because the Councilman Knight said, because it does go hand in hand. And I served on the Human Relations Commission. We have meetings. We paid someone to come in, and so it's time for the board to react. We want to talk about, so talk about the money that was spent to do those meetings. Uh, when it comes to televised meetings, I know people won't see them televised, but I also think we need to do a study and see how effective they are. Looking at the meetings, A, what? I mean, you're gonna spend all this money to do what? I think some people come down here just to see themselves on TV. It's crazy. And, and you all need to, um, address some of this mess that come up here before this council that, that makes no sense, just wasting people's time. Come in and talk about something that makes sense. That young female and a couple of boys, they had some good comments that you can, uh, measure. Some of the other stuff, quoting, quotes, we can quote, we can read that anytime. Uh, I know this is Black History Month, Black serve it throughout the year, so this is somebody else's one, and eight minutes, because I do it year-round. But again, back to the televised part, you're talking about spending a lot of money. I want you to check with Nash County, Pitt County, other places to see how effective it is. I happen to be home sometime. I've been working at Rocky Mountain for thirty-three years.
Thank you, sir.
So, see how effective it is.
If you don't mind, if you reach your address for the, uh, for the record.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's right.
One-two-seven Midway Lane, Tarver, North Carolina,离着seven miles out of Tarver, three miles out of Pine Top. My PO, my address, the PO box thirteen-nine-one Pine Top. And, but, but really, my, my, my address is thirty-four-seventy-five Wellington Boulevard, where I've been working for thirty-five years, thirty-three years, just left work in Cape Hill, so I can feed your mystery for free.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I'd ask that Darlene Spencer-Harris to the podium.
My name is Darlene Spencer-Harris. I reside at five-thirty-seven Arlington Street, Ward three, where Councilman Joyner is our councilman. Well, I'm here today to first make a couple of acknowledgements on the opening of the newest location of Blanch's Bistro, which is located at one-sixteen Tarver Street. I had the opportunity to patronize them on their opening and welcome them to downtown historic Rocky Mountain. The other thing that, um, that's come to my attention, that as Blanch just came in, Prime House moved out. Prime House will now be located at The Mills, along with Cool Geeks, which was originally downtown as well. Although this is a good investment for their, on their behalf, they must remember where the roots lie. The roots lie in Edgcombe County, where they were able to establish their business and to grow their business, to allow them to, opportunity to move to The Mills, which is located in Nash County. So I say that, along with the Salvation Army, which was also located in Edgcombe County, Peacemakers, which was also located in Edgcombe County, as though Edgcombe County is used as a starting point. Not a remaining point, but just a starting point. Let me get my feet wet. Let me get some of this water in my soul, and then I can move on to bigger and better things. In the meantime, you're forgetting the people that gave you the opportunity to build your business. But as long as it remains in Rocky Mountain, that is still a good thing, because it's still benefiting all the residents and the people and the economics here in this great city. So with that, I would say that we need more investments to come on back downtown, to fill these voids, because now these are voids. These are now voids. These are things that's gonna need to be filled. Otherwise, this is gonna be another decapitated building. Unoccupied, going down, another eyesore, somebody wanna foreclose on it. You know, it's not helping the community by these people moving out, although it's growing the whole city as a whole. So, on that note, one thing that I do have a concern about is this pole. This utility pole that fell on the opposite of one of my driveways on Arlington Street. The pole had been in terrible shape for some years now. So I had called about the pole. The pole does not belong to the city of Rocky Mountain. The city is not responsible for that pole. That pole's been laying down now, oh, almost.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'd ask Ms. Nathlin O'Ree to the podium. You're our final speaker, I'm lucky number thirteen.
Good afternoon. Mayor, City Manager, and City Councilwoman. My name is Nathlin O'Ree. I live at seventeen-thirteen Bentley Road, Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I come forward to ask, what is the city's position regarding our schools located in Rocky Mountain City? We have a Nash County, a Nash Rocky Mountain school system deciding if they will remove Rocky Mountain from the Nash Rocky Mountain school system name. And soon after, they may join the Nash County Commissioners to try and separate our Rocky Mountain schools by county line. Dividing our Rocky Mountain city schools by county line could be damaging for our real estate market, our economy, as well as a disservice to our children. Unchallenged, the school system and Nash County will continue to take money allocated to serve Rocky Mountain children and invest it exclusively in new schools in western North Nash County, and continue neglecting those in the Rocky Mountain inner city. As a city, we should not sit idly by. I would like to see Rocky Mountain take a proactive stance to protect our interests and our investment in real estate and children. I do not have the answers. However, I believe we should contract with advisors and legal representation to identify and move on strategies that best protect and preserve the best interest of our Rocky Mountain city schools, our children, as well as our economic interests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, direct Ms. O'Ree to write, uh, place she needs to go, reference to her question.
Uh, Ms. O'Ree, I've had some conversation, but the answer is that this resides with the school board, uh, between Nash and Edgcombe County. Nash and Edgcombe, uh, the Nash Rocky Mountain school system and Edgcombe County school system have a local, um, I think it's government, uh, policy, basically, contract that's been worked out and passed by the General Assembly. I believe the number's in twenty-twelve, and I can get you that information if you'd like to see it.
Yes, I would appreciate any further information. And I believe there's also another meeting tomorrow night, where the two will be coming together to discuss this further, but I do not want Rocky Mountain to be out of the knowledge of what's going in, what's going on, and what's happening. Because if something comes down, and our children who live in the city limits, who live in Edgcombe County, cannot go to the Rocky Mountain High School, I feel some kind of way. And, you know, I think that should be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a meeting going on in Rocky, in October at six o'clock about that. The Edgcombe County Commission and the, uh, school board.
Right, no, it's, yes, the Joyner.
Yes, there is a meeting tonight.
Six o'clock.
Uh, at six o'clock, by the Edgcombe County School Board, between the commissioners, Edgcombe County Commissioners and Edgcombe County School Board, um, this fair, same night.
It's a press video. It's a press video. They're resourcing.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something to you?
Councilman, pleasure.
Thank you, thank you, sir. I would also just like to remind everyone that it was the Rocky Mountain City Council that took a very aggressive stance on keeping the relationship as it was with the Rocky Mountain, the city of Rocky Mountain, continuing to contribute to Nash Rocky Mountain schools on behalf of the deficit between the fee for service fee that was charged against Edgcombe County students. And I would just like to remind everyone that it was the Nash County Commissioners who adamantly insisted that the city of Rocky Mountain had no right to contribute to those coffers with the Nash Rocky Mountain schools. I'd also like to remind all of us that while we have a legislation, legislative effort, a bill that has now become law, that says that Rocky Mountain should not participate in education, the General Assembly passed another law that made it perfectly legal for other cities to participate in school systems. So we do have somewhat of a hypocritical stance that's been taken in our community related to the education of children. From my standpoint, that has minimized what's good for the children, has marginalized what's good for Rocky Mountain, and what has centered around old line arguments about who should rule what. So it's a complex issue, but it's already been discussed, it has not been litigated, it's been discussed and legislated. But I do not feel that we should just sit idly by. I think that Nash County is gonna recognize that they're gonna lose athletic rankings, because they're gonna lose students. Edgcombe County's gonna realize they have facilities that need to be improved. And while we're doing all this realization after the fact, you got students who are just wanting to learn and play together, and feel like they belong in a city that they've always called on.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Dodgers.
Um, Madam Manager, I don't know how we follow up with concerns when we hear these, like Ms. Davis, and Ms. Williams, and Ms. Harris. Do we follow up with those, or can we?
Yes, we do. Actually, they're tracked and assigned to the appropriate staff, but yes, we do.
Right, right. And furthermore, can we look into this red light camera stuff? Um, as you know, we had an email going back and forth, and then the, uh, this is interesting what was passed out to us regarding the delinquency and so forth. I don't know the best way of moving forward with that, but we need to look into that, because if we have to wait for taxes, that's a concern.
Actually, um, I can speak to both. First, with the red light camera, I've asked Assistant City Manager Elton Daniels to work with the city attorney's office. He and his, um, staff will be able to, um, look further into the red light camera programs, both for the city of Fayetteville, as well as for Greenville. Uh, it's quite likely, I know for sure it will require some enabling legislation for that to happen. Um, some of the challenges that we have, of course, is that we'll be dealing with two school districts as opposed to one, because they do have red lights in both, uh, both counties. Uh, so, um, we're hoping, though, that we can, uh, perhaps have a discussion with the city council. Uh, I won't say we'll be ready by the time for the retreat, but maybe in April. Uh, the legislature, of course, goes back into session. I'm not so sure we'll be prepared for that, but I think we can give you some direction about what it would take to institute a program like that. The city most likely would have to front the money for a contract. Uh, those other two jurisdictions do have contracted services. They're not necessarily running the program themselves, and that certainly would be one of my recommendations, is that it's contracted. I actually was Deputy City Manager in Fayetteville when that program came, came back. So then, on the second, um, piece of information, which goes really hand in hand with, um, a discussion, and I'm sure we'll have this, uh, this evening about the demolition recommendations. And, um, I've asked Assistant City Manager Natasha Hampton and her staff, along with Cynthia, uh, our new community business development director, we'll get her feet wet really quickly here, uh, to help us, uh, look at establishing a program. With that, working along with, um, the finance department, because a large part of that is about collection. And when we come back to you with, um, third-party agreements about how to collect, uh, funds that are still due to the city, um, hopefully, we'll be able to take those funds and put it towards a program that's a bit more aggressive. My only, um, other concern would be whether or not we can actually land bank here in North Carolina. Uh, so we'll get some information about that. Uh, it's one thing to foreclose and, and gain ownership of the properties, but if you don't have something to do with the property or the system, to push that property on through, then we become the landlord. So we'll want to be able to look at it in a more holistic, uh, holistic way.
I'd just would like to join in and appreciate, uh, Ms. Copeland for her research. And, um, and just also state that it's not just about foreclosure, it's definitely about code enforcement and recognition that, um, we've come out of a deep recession, and some of the owners of these properties, um, have been struggling as well. But there's some people who have pockets deep enough to deal with these things. And one of the concerns that I had, which is why I made the recommendation a couple of years ago, um, or maybe a year or so ago, about putting a hold on demolishing properties, because while we do have historic districts, uh, that have been designated, there have also been areas of our city that have been completely overlooked and inventoried properties that are historic. Some of the oldest properties in Rocky Mountain are located in crosstown neighborhoods that are generally known as Holly Street or the neighborhood, and none of them have been inventoried for, um, historic designation. And my concern is that they've been neglected so long, that they are now in danger of being demolished without understanding the great history, uh, that we uphold here in Rocky Mountain. And, um, to just go and raise buildings because they look bad, and not look for opportunities to be creative and engaging our citizens that might be interested in, uh, working together to rebuild communities back in an appropriate manner that invites new people in and keeps people who are already there, I think is a loss for all of us, and we'll be repeating mistakes that many cities around the country have already made. Um, but I really appreciate, um, the, um, the energy, uh, that Ms. Copeland has brought to this. And I like the idea of engaging, um, strategies that perhaps no one has implemented before. I think that's the way that we, that's the standard, but I can always, um, been on the cutting edge. So I appreciate the, the look, and if we can do that with volunteers from our community, I know with our great staff that we have here, we can produce information. Uh, we have asked for detailed information to come back to us in a normal manner, in a deep way. So I would expect that we would have, um, information presented to us that presents facts, pictures of repeat offenders, who those individuals or organizations are, and then strategies to work with them to hurry up and get those properties brought, brought back into order, or other ways to get them out of those hands. If people can't fix the properties up, there are plenty of folks who would love a chance to, um, take the whole property and make it work. And that's, that was the spirit of why I was requesting that we slow down on this, uh, demolition process until we really understand what the priorities have been in, in pathing, creating pathways for demolition. So I, I'm all for saving as whatever we can as quickly as we can, and looking for mitigating strategies to keep other neighborhoods from moving into a decline, so that we keep our city looking good.
Thank you, Council. Were there any other comments related to the public comment portion?
Does, any times made the comment that if we want buildings not to wind up being demolished, we have to take care of them day by day, year in, year out. You can't, if you see the pictures of these properties that are proposed for demolition, there, there's no possibility of doing anything else. The time for concern and action is when they begin to deteriorate. I've said that before, and changing it.
One quick, uh, for the city manager, Hillsdale Neighborhood President and Secretary in the, uh, audience today, and they asked me at our last meeting, the update, on the two commercial properties on Laker Road. I know we started adopting ordinance. I know we started adopting ordinance, but I haven't heard any update as of yet, the timeframe that they would be demolished. So let's keep in mind while we are tearing down houses, there are some commercial buildings that really needs to be gone in residential areas as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your staff can get with Ms. Cutler and Ms. Evans, raise your hand. Give Ms. Jones or Ms. Tasha, Natasha Hampton, your number. Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, we're going to move on to item nine, which is the consent agenda. Item A is consideration of the following tax releases and/or refunds. Schedule A, the report of taxes under a hundred dollars approved for release and/or refund by the city manager, and Schedule B, report of taxes over one hundred dollars recommended for release and/or refund by the city council. Item B is consideration of temporary street closing requests from Halo Hands Foundation to close Beaman Street, block between Raleigh Boulevard and New Street from 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, April 11th, 2020, for a family appreciation day. And then item C is consideration of the following applications for the renewal of existing taxi rights. Mabel R. Page, Rocky Mount Cab Company, number five. Kendrick P. Scott, Rocky Mount Cab Company, number twenty-five. Recommended action is to approve consent agenda inclusive of tax releases, temporary street closing, and taxi right renewals.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Blackwell. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item number ten has enough complexity that I believe that our city attorney is going to speak to a few items on this matter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have handed out some changes in the authorizing resolution that was in your packet for this meeting. The change is to add the mayor so that it reads that the mayor and the city manager or either of them is authorized to sign the grant. Now, this resolution is not appropriating the money the city's matched, but it's authorizing the, for the city to make the application. The payment will come later and it is, as is reflected in the change in the bottom of the second page distributed on the memorandum, the last sentence, the city's share will be seven thousand five hundred dollars, but it will not be appropriated until there is a notice of help.
Any questions related to, so you're turning it upside? All right, item ten then is consideration of the resolution authorizing submission of the application for the building reuse program funding, just three hundred thousand dollars, for the North Carolina Department of Commerce to assist Armor Rock LLC with building improvements and modifications at 133 Blue Hawaiian Drive. It approves a ranging of five percent cash match, which equals fifteen thousand dollars, of which the city's share is seven thousand five hundred. It verifies the city has or will comply with the state and local laws, provides authority for the manager and mayor to execute additional documents pertaining to grant application. Recommended action is authorize the mayor to execute grant application on behalf of the city, and two, to adopt the resolution which authorizes the city's share of cash match of seven thousand five hundred, and for the manager to sign additional documents pertaining to the grant.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Miller, is there a second? Blackwell? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Okay, item eleven is consideration of the ordinance ordering this community code inspector to proceed with demolition of the following dilapidated dwellings. A, 502 Clyde Street. B, 1229 Hill Street. C, 1014 Arlington Street. D, 811 Clark Street. And C, 200 South Howell Street. The recommended action is to adopt the ordinances. Is there a need for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Morgan?
I was contacted by a developer that the 200 South Howell Street property should be demolished, but the other properties have a opportunity to be redeemed, especially with some of the process going on with the counties. So I would like to make a motion to table this item until I met with you.
Here, there's a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Blackwell. Motion, item hasn't been tabled then. All in favor, please say. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Carries.
And does that include the item, the 200 South Howell Street, the one that I believe you said didn't?
Yes, ma'am, that one could be demolished. But I don't know.
As I understood, the motion, we tabled everything on item eleven, I suppose we could have assessed. Jim?
Yes.
Could there be another motion made?
You just said to the new.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to demolish 200 South Howell Street.
Motion to demolish 200 South Howell Street, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed. Same sign. I think the ayes have. All right, item twelve is consideration of proposal from Martin Sterns and Associates to perform the city's audit for fiscal year 2020, the fourteenth year of service, fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars, as a one thousand five hundred dollar increase from the prior year. Recommended action is to award the contract to Martin Sterns and Associates to authorize the mayor and director of funding to execute the same on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike or Joyner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item thirteen is consideration of submission of a 2020 online pre-application to the North Carolina Recreational Trails Program to provide funding for multi-use natural surface trail within Battle Park. It's a one hundred thousand dollar minimum, twenty-five percent local match required, which is twenty-five thousand dollars. The recommended action is to authorize online submission of the pre-application by staff and proof of local match, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute required documentation and certifications, including subsequent grant application agreement. Is there a need for discussion?
Question.
City manager.
The material, this natural material for the walk is what kind of material?
I don't know the specifics about it, but it is, it's not asphalt for sure, but it is supposed to be a natural path.
Okay, and the second question then, this path would be the trail, whatever, and tell the length of it, would need to be installed no matter what the planning comes out of with regard to Battle Park?
Yes, ma'am. I think what we're talking about is being able to give people even greater access to the park and to enjoy, but also to be environmentally sensitive to the path, as you mentioned.
Okay, and so the greater access that would be available by this additional trail will not further impede the natural nature of that park. That's correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
All right. Blackwell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joyner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item fourteen is consideration of offer from Oldwood Corral, three thousand dollars for the purchase of 1110 Sycamore Street. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution of intent to accept offer to purchase, which authorizes the city clerk to advertise the offer for upset bids pursuant to general statute 168-269.
So moved.
So moved by Blackwell, is there a second? Second by Walker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item fifteen is consideration of the municipal agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for adjustment and relocation of city-owned water infrastructure necessary for North Old Carriage Road wiping. City's responsible for reimbursing the North Carolina Department of Transportation, seven hundred thousand sixty-seven, seven hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents, which is fifty percent of the construction cost. Recommended action is to approve the agreement authorized by mayor, city clerk, and finance director to execute the same on behalf of the city. Is there a need for discussion?
I'm ready for approval.
Councilman, and a second made by Joyner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item sixteen is consideration of the following bids. A, electric transformer, I'm going to butcher this. Let's just go with electronic, electric transformer award to Next Year Power Solutions at a total cost of one hundred thirty-eight thousand and twenty-nine dollars and eighty cents. B, train station cooling tower replacement award to Eastbound Mechanical LLC at a total cost of two hundred seven thousand forty-eight dollars, which includes base bid plus alternates. C, residential gas meters award to Elster American Meter Company LLC at an estimated cost of one hundred twelve thousand one hundred fifty dollars. That includes twelve hundred fifty gas meters at eighty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents each. Purchase proposed to be made in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-129E6. Bidder approved as sole source provider based on standardization or compatibility. D, pouring rights award to Pepsi Bottling Ventures LLC at a total annual cost of sixty-nine thousand three hundred forty-six dollars, Parks and Recreation, twenty-nine thousand five hundred twelve dollars, the event center, thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, a three-year contract with options to renew for two additional one-year terms, an estimated five-year contract amount equalling three hundred forty-six thousand seven hundred thirty dollars. Pepsi Bottling Ventures LLC has proposed monetary sponsorships to Parks and Recreation at forty thousand dollars and the event center at a hundred thousand dollars over a five-year term. Recommended action is to award bids as recommended, authorize the purchasing division to issue purchase orders and execute bid documents for A and C in accordance with the council's award, and three, to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute bid contracts for B and D on behalf of the city. Is there a need for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question regarding pouring rights.
Very well, Councilman Dawes.
I guess my questions come in, one about the rebates that are listed in here, and then also, why would we go to a sponsorship? Why don't we, why don't we just reduce the total amount of the cost by a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the two entities involved as opposed to having a five-year sponsorship? Because that would be a reduction of twenty-eight thousand dollars per year. You know, this is new to me, I don't, I'm not in the industry that does this, but you know, the sponsorships don't sit well with me. The rebates, I need better understanding because do we have a metric and how we're going to keep up with the metric regarding the rebates once we hit a certain level?
I'll have to ask the finance director to respond if she can, or we can get, you know, further information for you, but this was a bid process and this was a large responsible bid. There were two bidders, Pepsi and Coca-Cola. And as far as the sponsorship goes, I suspect that they want to provide a community service as well. Even after winning the award, they still want to be good stewards, if you will, within the community. So this isn't unusual at all. It's just that it comes in the form of a sponsorship where they can hang their banner at our facilities. And for that, you know, we also capitalize from their contributions. So it's not out of the ordinary, but I don't know, Amy, if you have anything else to add to that.
I'll agree that as part of these kinds of bids, this is normal in pouring rights to have the sponsorship, a piece of it, as well as the rebates. And city manager is correct, I mean, the sponsorship's going to cover their name brand being in our centers or out at our sports complex. So, you know, people come in, that's marketing for them and that's value. So it was, and it's part of the R and P for them to bring incentives. And so each of them did, and even in our prior contract, there were incentives as well. The rebates are separate. You didn't see it in the detail that you have here, but we've estimated the value of those rebates into the contract as well. The actual rebate, they were about the same. There was very little difference between Pepsi and Coke in the rebates, but all in, between the sponsorships, the cost of the product, and the rebates, it was still clear that the lowest bidder was Pepsi.
How are we going to monitor the rebates? I was saying if we get a certain level, we purchase a certain level, we get one rebate, if we get to another level, we get an extra rebate. How are we going to monitor that?
We can monitor that based on the invoices. I mean, some of it's based on the product that you buy, and the rebates can vary based on the type of product that you buy. So before we pay invoices, we should see our rebates as part of that.
All right, just from my industry, just experience has taught me more complicated than making these things, the more room for movement in there here is. That's what concerns me.
So, Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
I recall when we were developing the approach, the marketing approach with the event center, that we knew we were entering into a newer arena for Rocky Mount. And it seems that after we had completed our contract and were working on building the facility, we had a very early question about how we needed to market and brand Rocky Mount and be able to participate in a huge industry in sports marketing. And I thought that we had conversations around setting goals for just this type of thing with recruiting dollars from companies for, to support our bottom line efforts, to take some of the ease off of operational costs, and to look at ways to get industries committed and excited about being a part of the event center. And we also asked for a connection, a formal connection in our marketing strategies and our fundraising strategies to tie together Parks and Rec opportunities with the event center as well. So I was excited to see this because I thought this was the first time we actually did it, you know, where we had a beginning point, that we were beginning to see value come back from internationally respected companies. You know, we watch, everybody watches sporting events, whether you watch racing or wrestling or football or baseball or basketball, you see banners and logos, you know, everywhere with these major entities. And I'm happy for one to see Pepsi saying that they value Rocky Mount so much, they want to put their banner up and they want to pay for it. So I'm happy about it, and I'd like to make a motion that would be about this.
I'll second your motion, but I have a question. The, well, first of all, yes, I believe I've got, why did I believe you had the floor in terms of questions?
No, you've got, you've got a motion.
You've got a motion, I'll go second, then I've got questions, there's discussion, okay.
The scholarships, those are the scholarships that I think is in human relation far as summer youth program, is that correct? They would offer scholarship for those young people who cannot afford to participate in some of the programming with Parks and Rec. Is that correct, Mr. Archer General?
Correct.
That's correct. So I'm glad to see that forty thousand, maybe it could be a little bit more than forty thousand, but the citizens do appreciate that because we have a lot of youth who parents are not able to pay the fees for some of our programs and they can be awarded scholarship if they are referred to human relation. So I appreciate the pouring rights, the banner, and the scholarship, and I'd just like to see that number growing in height. Appreciate that, thank you.
For a call for a vote, I'm just going to say that under our business measures, that I've had the opportunity to negotiate pouring rights, this is not inconsistent with what you would see in the language, although I have to admit and understand your position, it feels a little squishy, but... a little squishy, but, but the reality of my experience is that this is how they insist on the board. Is there any additional discussion that we have on the floor?
Yes, I'd like to say, for those of you that didn't go to the Event Center this weekend, if you had a stop by there, the Event Center was definitely, and Rocky Mountain from our hotels to our eateries, were definitely full for at least three days complete because of the Event Center doing a great job, and I had the privilege to stop by and see that, and really proud of the staff and what they, the joint staff that are doing at the Event Center.
I would, for clarification, my concern with the sponsorships really was why don't we just reduce the cost? And I understand that the sponsorships, they get their names up there and everything, and I think, I'm confused now with what Councilman Knight was discussing about scholarships, they're, in there deviation between scholarships and sponsorship, or is it the same thing?
I don't know, monetary sponsorship to Parks and Rec, so I guess it's the terminology.
Well, I just didn't know if they were talking about putting just their Pepsi logo up there and.
I know this question was asked, I just asked that question, and Archie said correct, so it's correct or not.
At least we got money to do something with.
Right, let's leave it at that. Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Excuse me, I think I said one job right now. According to you. But all discussion, any, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item seventeen goes over various vacancies and appointment positions that we have, are there any appointments or nominations?
We do have an appointment, and it's not based upon what Mrs. Wilkins said, or the decision of the NAACP in Rocky Mountain, who voted on Cooper Blackwell as being representative for human relations. So I'm just here to tell you, be on your Ps and Qs when it comes to race relations and any other relations in this city. He's a smart, intelligent, and he's very conscious of what's going on in this country, in this state, and in this city. So be ready for a serious dialogue, be ready to act upon whatever he brings to the board along with other members. I just want to thank Mr. Danson, it was not your fault that you were singled out because of your address.
I can handle it.
Because when the memo came to the NAACP, like any other organization, it says you have a representation from your organization, not mentioning that they have to be a citizen of Rocky Mountain, but they just have to be a member of the organization, just like the chamber, just like the rotary, just like anything else. And so I just wanted to clear that up, and, and the clerk and I, and the manager, we are clear on that. So I just want to thank you and appreciate you for your, bringing truth to power to this board, and I know you're not going to stop there.
Definitely not.
You're going to be even.
I'll be two of us now.
Two of us, yeah, two, hopefully three. So I just thank you for all the, what you've done, and we welcome Cooper Blackwell, the fifth, is that correct, Mr. Black?
That's correct.
The fifth to the Human Relations Board.
Thank you, Councilman Knight, are there any other appointments or nominations?
Well, I just want to make clarification on the planning board, which I served on for many years. Each ward has a representative on the planning board, in addition to Edgecombe in Nash County, and, but the, the difference is, the Edgecombe in Nash County representatives, if, if there are any, are not allowed to vote on anything that resides within the, in the city, only the extra restroom, I forgot what's referred to.
GTJ.
GTJ. So just wanted to make that clarification there.
Okay, thank you. But that will move on to.
Yes, Ms. Darling Spencer for the committee, Community Appeals Board.
Okay, so do I have a motion contingent upon receipt of personal information forms for Ms. Spencer? Yes, is there a second?
So moved. I'm the second, sorry.
Second for my Councilman Knight, in your exuberance tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any other nominations or appointments? Okay, that being said, we'll move on to item seventeen A, which is not only, but intended as something that was added, I believe, last minute, but it's the consideration of the scheduled annual city council retreat, scheduled for March twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh, twenty twenty in Durham, North Carolina. It was added at last minute. Hopefully, this is our last meeting to be able to make a resolution to this.
What were those dates again, please?
March twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh of twenty twenty, for the retreat to be held in Durham, North Carolina.
So moved.
Is there one, Blackwell?
No, not a joint, second of.
All right.
I didn't know you was asking for a vote.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
To be determined.
To be determined, all right.
Well, we'll give due notice to where it is and the time, time split, each of the dates.
Well, far as we know, we hope in Durham.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
Correct.
We have two other items. The next item is consideration of ordinance approving a temporary street closing, ordinance adopting requirement of North Carolina Department of Transportation standards for the St. Patrick's Day Bar Crawl, and that's a request for temporary closure on Tarver Street in downtown area on Saturday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty, from three PM until ten, ten PM. If there's no discussion, I'd like a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Miller, second by Altridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And then finally, Councilman Walker has an item that he would like to address the group with.
Nash County Special Olympics, presented with this call on Valentine's Day to show their love, and they wanted me to make sure that I showed the council, Madam Manager, Mayor, and also to the citizens that we're here for tonight's council meeting. So if we could always give them a hand for their work.
If you get a moment, just follow them on Facebook, Nash County Special Olympics, and you can be able to be a part of everything they have going on at South Rocky Mountain Community Center. Thank you.
Is there any new business that we need to consider? Not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, yes, you just have on your desk for information in response to a request from Councilmember Altridge.
Action.
Right, no, no action.
Okay, so I have a motion from somebody, Joyner, I have a second from somebody. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you.